This conference will now be recorded.
It is six o'clock on November 15th. We'll call the zoning board meeting to order. And we will start with case 22-14. Appeal of administrative decision of the code enforcement officer for denial of the building permit to install a 1998 mobile home for gas. If you just give your name and address.
Oh, yeah, sure. It's Tina Dofosis, 580 Lower Bay Road in Sanburton.
Guide me in this, that we're doing this.
Yep, so you're gonna start it. Yep, so you're gonna announce that this is a rehearing. And you're taking any new information or if they want to go with the old information.
Okay.
You have the information. And the information that I submitted with the request for rehearing and your notice of decision coming out of the hearing. And then she can give her input and then we'll give our input and your input. You guys can deliberate.
Okay, so we heard this case two months ago and we got an appeal to rehear it, as you know, and the board elected to rehear the case.
Yeah, I'm a little confused about that. I don't, I don't know how it came about.
I believe the town asked us.
The code enforcement officer, yeah.
Okay.
There was a new development.
So either side has 30 days to rehearing. You could, I mean, if you were denied or whatever, you could request a hearing and a butter can. But it's like going for an appeal in court, you have to have new evidence and a reason for the rehearing.
Okay.
Which we presented at that rehearing.
Was this more than 30 days ago?
No, it was.
It had to be, the request had to be submitted within 30 days and then the board has 30 days to decide on rehearing.
Okay, okay, perfect, thank you.
So the town sent in some follow-up information and requested a rehearing on it.
Sure.
Based on the information we provided, we agreed that it made sense to rehear the case.
Okay.
And so we're back here rehearing.
Perfect, I'm with you.
So I don't know if we need to go back over the original presentation, I guess. If you want to, you can.
Um, I'm not sure if we're rehearing for the year of it or for the denial of the permit. I guess maybe this is where my confusion is coming from.
That is a fair question and I want to make sure that I have the right answer.
Okay.
We are rehearing our interpretation of that case.
Okay.
That's, agree with that, that I'm saying that right?
Okay. Only because there's just a lot of issues with the whole thing, so I don't know if we're going, oh, I'm sorry, if we're going back to the year of the mobile home or if we're moving forward with.
So ultimately, it is going to come down to the year of the mobile home.
Okay.
Because that kind of was, ended up being the hangup, is that.
What we.
Is our interpretation as a board.
Correct.
Meeting was that, the letter of what was written was that it was, it would meet the 1995 HUD standard.
So that.
Needed to meet that standard.
Right, but the year of the mobile home is not in question anymore?
Well, so that was our original understanding. There has been some new evidence brought to light that the year of the mobile home does matter.
Okay.
And that's.
Well, is, would somebody present me with this?
Yeah, yeah, I can reread these. So I'm not gonna read the entire minutes here unless you want me to.
No, if, if somebody has a copy, that'd be great.
This is a case from, this is a zoning board of adjustment meeting from October 21st, 2014.
But it was, it's just, it's not what I understand. It's relevant because this is when the gaslight got approval to expand those extra lots. So this is the decision, they came to the zoning board because they only allowed 30 lots in any mobile home in Tilton. And they asked to expand, as I'm sure Mary is aware, to add additional lots. And when they came, they needed a variance and that's the decision that they made.
Okay.
So this is relative to.
Okay, okay.
So that's where this is coming from.
Sure, great, okay.
Uh, I'll read this paragraph just because I think it'll provide a little bit more context, but if we need to expand more, I absolutely will. Chairman Pleasner asked if anyone from the general public wished to provide further comment. None was offered. Mr. Brown said that he considered the matter of financial hardship and had determined the request stands alone as proposal to a viable, to viably utilize a piece of land regardless of the financial circumstances that exist. Mr. Hellwig reiterated the purpose would need, would need, would need exceed the allowable density established in the zoning ordinance. Chairman Pleasner expressed agreement, adding that the addition of sewer would represent an improvement. He added, the zoning ordinance is outdated and it's, and in its requirement that manufactured units must have been built in 1995 or later. Mr. Sassan proposed that the board create a condition that references the current zoning ordinance at such a time that new structures are installed. That way, he said, if the town updates the zoning ordinance, the new building age limit will apply. So they move, they pass it here in the two conditions of passing it. All units shall be connected to municipal sewerage and approval shall be contingent upon conformity with the zoning ordinance, including requirements for maximum age of allowable manufactured structures at the time any structure is installed. Uh, so that was the evidence that was presented to the board.
Okay.
That we felt that it should be rehearsed.
Okay, may I possibly read that? Awesome, thank you so much.
What's that?
And then, and then actually, he has it, but just, that's the actual decision which says this again, in the notice of decision. That's the minutes.
In the same move thing and then this is the notice.
And that's the notice of decision that was sent to them.
And that's out of the minutes of the 2014 zoning board meeting, correct, ma'am?
That is out of the meeting, the minutes of the meeting, correct?
Yes, yes.
So here it says that.
This is our, our case, yeah.
Okay, so here it's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, sorry.
That's good. He said that, he added that the zoning ordinance is outdated and its requirement that manufactured units must have been built in 1995 or later. Mr. Sasson proposed that the board create a condition that references the current zoning ordinance at such time that new structures are installed. That way, he said, if the town updates the zoning ordinance, the new building age limit will apply. Did they update it?
So our, my interpretation of that, I think our, the board's interpretation at the last meeting is that the way we read that is that 1995 is too old. That's how I'm reading this. It's outdated and it's requirement, they must have been built in 1995. So even, even if you take that, I take that as they think that it should be newer, is what they're saying for it, when you follow up that question afterwards.
Okay, this one right here, we're still on this one?
The, the same highlighter, he added.
Okay, perfect.
Ordinance is outdated and it's requirement that manufacturing units must have been built in 1995 or later.
Yep.
Mr. Sassan proposed that the board create a condition that references the zoning ordinance at such a time. But what this does provide some clarification for us on is, we speak, spoke about at the original meeting, is was the intent of the town to make it 1995 or newer?
Correct, right.
Or was the intent of the town to meet the HUD standard? And to me, this spells out the intent of the town was that the building must be 95 or newer.
Read that part right there.
Sorry, this you must conclude in order to.
Read your name?
Yeah. Part where I made a motion to approve that the unit does not need to be built after, right, that was, that was what we understood at the original meeting. But that was based on our not having clarification from the town because the ordinance was, was poorly written.
The ordinance is still poorly written.
Right, it is.
Okay.
But after some, going back and finding some more conversation amongst the people of the town, it became more clear to me anyways, I won't speak for you guys out of turn, so if we deliberate here more, that it wasn't just about meeting the HUD standard, it was about age of units that was the housing stock in our community.
Outdated, okay, see, he, the ordinance is outdated and it's requirement that manufactured units must have been built in 1995 or later. Mr. Sasson proposed that the board create a condition that references the current zoning ordinance at such time that new structures are installed. That way, he said, if the town updates the zoning ordinance, the new building age limit will apply. So I, I guess my question is, is where is this new zoning ordinance?
Can I speak to that?
Uh, sure, yeah.
So the.
Because that's not what Chuck gave me.
There was no new zoning ordinance.
Okay.
The, Mr. Sasson Dari was the planner at the time and his concern was that in their decision for the park, if they quoted the ordinances, usually you're grandfathered to what the ordinance says at the time of approval. So had they not put this in, it would have had to be built 1995.
Right, but they did put it in.
So, he was concerned that they would update in the future that the town may update and say it had to be 2005 or better and that they would be grandfathered and only needed 1995. So he wanted to make sure that if they updated and made it a requirement to be newer than 95, like 2005 or 2020.
I understand.
Make sure they had to, they weren't grandfathered to the 1995 or better.
I understand what you're saying, but that's not how it reads and, in my opinion, in my opinion, you're just making that one more thing. I was already granted the appeal.
So we, you were granted the appeal that are, I kind of remembered here. That we interpreted what was in front of us as meeting the 1995 HUD standard.
That's right.
So.
Which comes from Chuck. That piece of paper came directly from your building inspector.
Well, it comes from HUD, I mean, you gotta go to HUD to get the.
Nope, that came from the Tilton website. Chuck, if you have that? The one that was presented at the last meeting, that came from Tilton.
Okay, and, and actually, I'm gonna be, and you guys feel free to cut me off here anywhere. For me, when the rehearing this, is it almost made the HUD standard irrelevant because of.
The HUD standard should be irrelevant, absolutely.
Because it needs to be when the unit was manufactured. So in the reference of this particular case, I believe your unit was manufactured in the 80s.
Eighty-nine, yep.
So it doesn't matter, the HUD standard, because it wasn't manufactured in the year that the town has asked for it to be its minimum requirement.
I don't read it that way, so, no, I don't. And had this been, had this been given to me in six months ago, we wouldn't be sitting here, but that's not what was given to me.
Well.
By Chuck.
Sure, we, we mean, this is.
One minute.
We.
This is from 2014 and it clearly says that if the town updates the zoning ordinance, the new building age limit will apply.
Right, but the building age limit is 1995. That is the current town building age limit. The town hasn't updated its limit.
Okay, do you guys have that ordinance? That's what I'm trying to ask.
Yes, this is.
I mean, these are minutes from a meeting that could have been revised many times after. I wouldn't know that.
Well, I mean, that's the whole point of having meeting minutes is that they stand as a public record.
I realize that, but this is from eight.
2014.
Yeah.
Do you have the original?
I mean.
The original proposals here.
In the last eight years, many things could have happened that I don't know about.
I don't think they would have lessened the year. If anything, it would have gone up.
Right, but I don't.
They wouldn't say we would want older mobile homes coming in.
I understand that.
Right?
But somebody could have said in the, in meetings, you know, prior, that it doesn't have to be a 95, that it just has to meet the 95 standards as we've gone back and forth about this, probably for six months now.
So again, I think Chuck, and Chuck can skip too, and our common interpretation was that it had to be 1995 or better, which was the interpretation of the previous planners and previous boards. And that is what we consistently said and then it came to this board.
And they appealed it for me.
And they agreed, they didn't have enough information. We want more information to show why we believe it needs to be 95 or later and that's why we're rehearing it. Because that's the intent of the ordinance and that's what we're standing with because there's no way of certifying in 1995.
So how did you get this? No, there is no, there is no way.
Right, because it has to say 1995 HUD on, because it had to be manufactured in 1995 is the only way.
Can I just say that there is, there is no 1995.
So I, because I went back to her approval for a variance to expand and that's when I found the minutes, because this was all contingent on their variance.
Sure, that's how it happened.
Right, exactly.
I'm sure that's how it happened.
Research to find, I'm sorry?
It doesn't say it on the variance.
Yeah, it says it right in the decision. I have.
The one I have, I'm pretty sure.
I'm gonna read this in its entirety.
Absolutely.
Just wanna add that with research, we talked, they didn't do anything in 1995. There is no 95 HUD standard. It doesn't exist.
And that even leads me further to believe that the town's intent is that there wouldn't be anything brought into town that didn't have a.
Why did they say that?
Because, because local government is imperfect and, and things get missed and this type of situation isn't, isn't, you know, foreseen and that's the reason.
It's not, no, I, no, I totally agree with you, but this is after the fact that I have now, I'm $20,000 into a trailer that's already sitting in Tilton.
Already on a foundation, it's already there. It's, what are we supposed to do, move it out?
I mean, that's not, like, I feel for your, your personal.
I realize that, but I'm in, I am sitting in front of a zoning board that can change that for me.
But we can't do it for you. We have to do what the town, so this got put to me one way and it makes a whole lot of sense. The people who bring their cases to us are asking us to allow them to break town law. And you have to make a case why you're asking us to break town law is justified.
Right.
And so we have to speak for the 3,500 people who live here and what they wanted out of their, out of their town and that sort of thing. So I didn't come up with this 1995 year. This wasn't me.
No, and I'm not saying that you did.
I know, so I'm unstuck. I keep saying me, I apologize. There's more than just me here. We're, we're stuck to what they wrote and we have to try to dig through these things and interpret what it is.
Well, we're never stuck.
We, I mean, we are stuck by the, we are.
Because there's, there's ordinances that are, you know, there are setbacks that aren't met. There's plenty of things that the building department or the board or, you know, whoever it is that writes these up, that they can't be met.
As a case-by-case situation, we find out why this one particular thing doesn't meet the perfect box that they try to put into in, in the rules. And there isn't anything about this particular case that makes that you can't have a 1995 a man, if, there's nothing there other than.
Does everybody else read it the same way? That, I mean, and I'm not, nothing against you.
There are four people here, yeah.
But I mean, there's a board and.
Yeah, I read it as if the, the town wanted 1995 or later.
Or later, yeah. That's what it says.
Perfect, thank you, Leanne, I appreciate it.
I'm sorry.
It's 2014. You must have dug deep.
I mean, this is the, I mean, I don't think this is digging deep. This, the, this particular, I mean, there was clearly a misunderstanding between, not a misunderstanding, there was a mismatch in understandings of your case and the town meeting what you're trying to do. And so they're trying to, to solve your problem. And sometimes the sol, the solution to that doesn't necessarily pan out the way we want it, but if you go back to.
But it already panned out for me.
Well, you didn't.
By the ordinance of the.
Well, no, that what we told you when you came to this board is you had to meet whatever that standard was. And if you can't meet that standard, you can't.
But that's not a standard you're asking.
So you can't do what we asked for.
Yes, I can. You asked me when I left this meeting, if I can prove to you that it meets the standards of 1995, I can. I can prove that to you. That, that's what.
And I don't know how come you had to come back here.
Because she brought it.
Well, she doesn't feel, the town doesn't, I'm not gonna say she, the town doesn't feel as though you've done that.
But I haven't.
Otherwise, they would have.
But I haven't had the opportunity.
Ma'am, it's, we haven't opened up to public comment.
I haven't had the opportunity. So that's why I'm saying, what am I here for? Am I here for the year of the trailer or am I here to prove that it's, that it follows the standard? Which one am I here for?
So you're here for the year of the trailer. We were incorrect as a board in our previous interpretation.
Okay.
And if I remember correctly, we had some debate about, it seems like the intent of this was to be 1995 or newer.
Okay, so does anybody have a copy of the last meeting with the information that was in there? Because in there is the Tilton particularly, what was given to me from Chuck.
What's that?
She wants a copy of the one, copy of the one.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
I'm sure we do.
The one that we argued the wording on, yeah, yeah.
Meeting, the last meeting with you, you're talking about.
Yes.
Eight point one, yeah. All manufactured housing installed after 112,000 must meet the specifications and standards established by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development as of April 1, 1995. That's how it's written.
The standards.
And that was our debate as part of the meeting was, what did the town want?
But.
But there are, so the standards don't exist, so that helps me believe that what the town was intending to do.
But you already issued me an appeal on the year. All four unanimously issued me the appeal.
Yep.
Of the year. So everyone said, okay, can you prove to me it meets the standards of 1995? I said, yes, I can.
Right. Part of that was that, this was a little bit of a, we were deciding our understanding of this.
Right.
So then that decision has been.
Can I ask what, when that ordinance was written?
I'm guessing sometime in 2000.
Okay, so that would be after this.
It would have been before this.
No, this is 2014.
Well, it was written sometime in the year 2000.
Oh, 2000, I'm sorry.
So this was before this discussion.
Okay.
So our decision was appealed by the town. The town said, hey, we think you were wrong in your decision. This is the information we presented to you, why we believe your decision was.
I still don't believe this wording.
And if this was presented to us at that meeting, our outcome may have been different.
It may have been.
Right.
And at that point, I would have known what my options were, but I was granted the appeal and moved forward. Now I've moved forward.
I mean, ultimately, you could have waited the 30 days for the decision of the appeal to pan out before you chose.
I just got this. I haven't even gotten the letter in the mail.
Can I just say, I mean, moving forward, just that issue is, there's nothing to move forward, you have no permits to move forward.
I can do anything without a permit. I, I only need permits. I only need permits for decks, for permanent structures. I can go and remodel the inside of anything I want. They don't require permits, am I correct?
I, I couldn't speak, that's outside of my.
I think Chuck has already talked about this, correct?
When it's my turn to speak, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So I can't speak to the permitting process, it's not what the purview of us are, we'll issue permits.
But once I was granted that appeal, I moved forward spending more money because of this. So the fact that I didn't have this information either is not fair to me.
I mean, it's.
Nobody granted me, when Chuck can't, Chuck, do you happen to have the paper that you handed me?
I'm not sure who.
Yeah, we're, we're right here, right now. He's gonna have his chance. We haven't even gotten to the point where the town makes its case yet. So we've only, we've only heard the first half of this.
Okay.
So we're, we're still at how we got here, if that makes sense.
It does. I get it.
So you are correct that we gave you that appeal.
Okay.
The process is, there's a 30-day window on anything that we do that somebody can say, I want, I want, I'd like you to rehear this.
Can I ask when the appeal was? Because nobody's telling me that. I didn't put in an appeal.
Well, you, correct, the town.
All right, but I'm just.
Wouldn't be you.
Nope, I'm just asking when, when it was put in. Where is the piece of paper, when it was put in?
I can tell you when it was posted. I know that it was posted for, for a week here. I can give you the dates if someone can get it faster here.
October 17.
And when was my hearing?
September, some, September.
So when was it?
Yours was September.
Yeah, it was September, some.
And you put this in when, October what?
Seventeen.
October 17.
So if I was. So should I have been given something? So you put this in without my knowledge, without, you know what I mean? So it's been, so is it past the 30 days?
No, 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 they've already ruled on the rehearing. So anyone can request a rehearing.
Absolutely.
A butter, anyone on the Facebook, and that has to be done within 30 days of the decision. Then they have 30 days to decide whether they're gonna rehear it, which they did. Now we're here to rehear. So now you would notice.
So now, so what, what is your issue with this?
Okay, so you're not here to talk to her, you're here to talk to us, because we've agreed to rehear the case.
Perfect.
So I've lost my train of thought here. So the town, the town is in an impasse. That's why we're here, because they cannot move forward for you based on our ruling.
Yep.
And so they have found some evidence that provides.
He added that the zoning ordinance is outdated and its requirement that manufactured units must have been built in 1995. Okay, so we're agreeing that this person, because I'm sorry, I don't know who this is, the chairman.
Yeah, so what he's saying is that 1995 is too old. They believe it should be newer.
But see, I don't read it that way.
This zoning is, ordinance is outdated.
He said the zoning ordinance is outdated.
Right, meaning that it needs to be refreshed. It should be, it should be newer.
Right, but it's not specific saying it should be newer, it's just saying that the zoning ordinance is outdated. It's not.
Like, again, that wouldn't mean we would backtrack. We wouldn't say we'll allow 1980.
No, I, I get what you're saying, but.
So outdated means it needs to be updated and probably be stricter. Nothing ever goes looser.
Yeah, but maybe, maybe the zoning ordinance itself is outdated. Maybe it's, I, I think we're.
You know what I'm saying?
No, I understand what you're saying, but I think that we're, regardless.
It's not, again.
He proposed that the board create a condition that references the current zoning ordinance at such time that new structures are installed. That way, he, he said, if the town updates the zoning ordinance, the new age limit will apply. But nothing was updated.
Correct. So you're misunderstanding, you're misunderstanding what the point of this is here. Part of our agreeing to, to make the motion that we did was under the condition that we don't have clarification what the town intended with its 1995 date. The board decided at the rehearing, this provides further clarification on that. So regardless of whether new zoning was passed, it provided us with a clarification on a big question mark we had at the, when you made your original case. That's, that's where we're at. It doesn't matter the new zoning wasn't passed, it matters that this provided clarification in an area that was gray on what exists.
Okay.
On what the, using past precedent and past communication in our town, what the town intended. That's, that's where we're at.
And if new zoning ordinance was passed, let's say 2000, then this particular decision here would be no longer 1995, it would be 2000.
If, if, if that's what they, right, if, if, right, if that's what they chose, yeah, I, I absolutely agree, but, I mean, this is on a private.
Made because.
This is on a private piece of land.
Still 1995.
I'm not asking to move it into, you know, a, a new piece of land. This is in a private park.
Well, I mean, it would be no difference when you buy a private piece of land and you have to meet the town.
I believe there is a difference.
When you buy a piece of land and you build a house.
I'm not buying a piece of land.
When you, but, but they own.
Putting it in a park that pays taxes already on what is already in there, which is 1950s, 1960s, 70s, 80s, 90s. It's a private piece of land. It's not owned by this, it's not owned by the, by the town of Tilton. It is owned by a co-op.
But I mean, I, I own my land. Standards, they had to meet standards.
You still have to meet standards.
You still have to.
They have to meet standards as a park. As a park, they have to meet standards.
And one of the conditions of operating a park in this community is that you meet the zoning requirement.
I don't, I don't believe that to be true because.
I mean, we have zoning for mobile home parks.
You have zoning for a park, absolutely. And I have those zonings. None of them, none of them contain the year of the trailer. None of them.
Would you say that your home is a manufactured house?
My house is a manufactured house.
So that it meets the zoning requirements talking about all manufactured housing?
I'm sorry, I miss, I'm trying to get the ordinance. Just give me one second. Because you have two different ordinances. You have ordinances for homes and you have ordinances for parks. Oh, you have it?
I'll say that the contingency of them expanding this park was this. So you can't sit there and say, not all parks have the same. They were asking for.
You only have two.
Expansion. They were asking for an expansion and the expansion was approved based on them following the two cases here.
So.
And so you can't backtrack and say, hey, we got the benefit of an expansion, we don't have to follow these rules.
But here is for your mobile home park. These are the.
Based on their expansion.
And this was done.
They have new rules for maybe specifically this.
Gaslight Village, Gaslight Village.
This is the 2022 ordinance?
I mean, the whole book is 2022 updated. That's figure 198, 2000.
Okay, so nowhere in here, in your ordinance, in your ordinance, does it say in order to operate a mobile home park, it has to be in 1995. This is from your website, like, that Leanne just gave me.
All manufactured housing installed after 112,000 must meet the specifications and standards established by the United States Department of Housing and Urban HUD.
Standards.
As of April 1, 1995.
That's right, the standards.
We're, we're circling back, so this is.
But we are circling back.
This is what we came here to discuss, this article.
Because the standards are, this is from the state of New Hampshire.
Right, but this is Gaslight Village. When they came to 2014.
I under, no.
It says 1995 in here.
Yep, but it says the standards. The standards by the state of New Hampshire, because this is also on your website. All modular buildings and building components bearing a label of certification pursuant to the requirements of this chapter shall be deemed by local enforcement agencies as meeting the modular building code. This is from the state of New Hampshire.
Correct. And your home does not contain a, a stamp on it.
Yes, it does.
That has a date of after 1995.
It has a stamp on it.
Not after 1995, which is what the town asked for.
They don't.
That's fine.
It doesn't have, it doesn't have a year on it.
Ma'am, I understand that.
It doesn't have a year on it.
That, I understand that, but the town has asked for a year.
But it doesn't have a year on it.
Then you aren't meeting the town's conditions. That's the whole hangup.
So now, do I get some kind of, um, some, do I have to get another, go in front of the zoning board again for you guys to say, oh, okay, you know what I mean? Or now we can just ignore what you gave me before
We're, we're not.
And going by 2014 this time instead of 2020.
Ma'am, you're, you are handpicking the things out of this and not looking.
I have to though.
And not looking at the big picture. So part of the last, the last consideration that we had was that we are, we took this literally because we didn't have any other information to provide us a different context.
Right, I, I get that.
And then the passing of your park that you were trying to put a home in, when they came to the town to, to break the law again, to expand their park larger than our town regularly would allow for a mobile home park.
What does it allow?
It allows for 30 units.
How many units do you have? How many units do you have?
Got thirty one.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
So part of that expansion, they asked for five more spots, absolutely, for five more spots.
Yeah.
And in the granting of their five more spots.
Yes.
There was discussion about the year that the, the unit was manufactured.
Okay.
So it provided some more clarification to our, to the context of the discussion we had at the original meeting.
Okay.
That's why we asked to reheare.
Okay.
So when Gaslight was given the variance for those five lots, it was specified everything had to be nineteen ninety five or newer, right? Or ninety five or later.
Motion.
So this is the, this is the evidence that the town brought at the rehearing, and this is what we are here to talk about.
Okay.
So if you can make a case that your home has been manufactured later than nineteen ninety five.
I can't tell you when it was manufactured. There's no date on the HUD stamps, which you have a copy of.
Right.
So I can't tell you when it was manufactured. I can tell you the year of it, but there is nothing that will tell you when it was, what it was, when it was manufactured. It could have sat on a lot for ten years before it was, before it was certified by HUD.
Uh, I, I couldn't speak to that.
But that's what I'm saying, I think it's, this is all interpretation, and I'm not looking to do anything illegal, I'm not looking to do.
I, I, I don't, I'm not trying to say you're trying to do something illegal, I'm not trying, but we're tied to what the town has set forth for what it wants for its community. And fairly clearly to us here, the town spelled out before any of us were members of this, that they wanted.
But can I ask where's, where it says Gaslight in here?
It's on our paperwork right here. Does she have a copy of that?
I, I don't think I do.
Gaslight, yep.
Uh, application seeking relief from zoning article eight point two point three to allow for thirty nine units within the Gaslight Village Cooperative. At, uh.
Those last ones said thirty five years.
I don't know.
The one dated October seventeenth, do you want me to give her this one? Because that's where it says, it's by Chuck, it's on.
Sure, it expired, that's.
Yeah, and currently it's expired. This is signed by Chuck, so I mean, I don't know.
That's all right. Are these, um.
It's on the second page at the top, Gaslight Village, right there when they came before the.
But Chuck wasn't here then, right?
Right, but that's what they found in the research of two thousand fourteen, that's what was, Gaslight was given.
I understand that.
That's all we could go by.
But my question is, is this could have been typed up today? It says October seventeenth.
That's the letter I sent.
Right, so I'm looking for the actual real one.
Oh, I don't, I don't have.
Well, we got the draft minutes.
But it doesn't say Gaslight in here anywhere, you're, 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 I guess the whole question.
Here it is, the front page, KCB fourteen dash zero seven.
That's what I'm looking for.
Ma'am, I feel like what we're talking about here is debating the validity of the paperwork.
I, I am, I'm, I, it's not that I'm dating, it's, no. It's not that I'm dating the validity, okay? I guess maybe the history that I have is what I'm, is what I'm trying to validate, because I think that she would have pulled anything out just to prove or try to misconstrue of everything that's been going on. So all of these pieces of paper that are, that are, been passed around, like, I don't have any clue what this is, but it was written October seventeenth of this year. I have no clue what it is. Does anybody?
Okay, this, the article, the, from the seventeenth, that was, uh.
That's why we appealed the, the decision to hear the case again was because of that.
This was her request for reheare.
Okay.
That was why.
Again, I.
That was why.
Thank you, I didn't, yeah, yeah, thank you.
So all of these documents, they're publicly available.
Right, they're online, I'll look through that.
I, I tried to ask, I didn't go all the way back to two thousand fourteen. Who scoured the last eight years?
I, I mean.
Well, what would have happened, that you would have gone and said?
I did, oh, sorry.
Because there's history and there's people that have been here for a while.
Yeah.
So didn't we do something with them?
Yeah.
Then I'm talking about the mobile home park.
Yeah.
And so it would be a no brainer to look it up.
And, and I'm pretty sure that the reason I came here in the first place was because of all of these. Why, you know what I'm saying? I feel like that should have been presented the first time, so I would.
They didn't have crossed that, you know, they didn't know that.
But that's my point.
For, yeah.
Well, so, I mean, we can, we can, should have, we can't should have, would have, could have, that's nothing we can do about that. We're a board, we get what we're given when it shows up in front of us.
That's right.
And we have to.
And that's what you voted on.
Move on what we have available.
And that's what you voted on.
And then that's why the appeals process exists, because maybe we had voted not in favor of you, and you found something in town history that was reversed.
Think the appeal should be by me, not by the town?
Well, there's two, there's two plaintiffs in every case. Sometimes it's the, and this especially in an administrative decision, there's, you're complaining against the decision the town made, so the town is the defendant in that case.
I wasn't complaining, I was, I was looking for, I was looking for a clarification that.
Complaining comes across with negative connotations.
It does.
You, would, the town gave you for an answer, you wanted someone else to look at it.
I did.
But that makes two parties in the case.
Absolutely.
And so we ruled as a board.
Okay, so.
Wait, wait, ma'am, the two parties of that case have the same thirty day window to make an appeal to us to reheare it. And in this instance.
Parties being the town.
The town, uh, and you. And the town is the one who asked us to reheare this case. And that's how we're here.
Doubt in my mind.
We're circular arguing about how we got here.
I am, because if you understand my, if you understand my point of view, I mean.
I feel your frustration. I feel your frustration.
We do, we understand.
You don't. Um.
I don't live your frustration, but I understand it.
No, I get it.
Now, shouldn't Gaslight Village have given you that ordinance?
I'll take, I'll take that up with Gaslight Village myself.
Yeah.
That's, absolutely. I mean, that's neither here nor there at this point. I guess my, my issue is. October twenty second, two thousand fourteen.
That was after, since, it was, uh, they was held on.
October twenty first.
October, October twenty first, two thousand fourteen.
Okay, so now I have one from October twenty second.
Yes.
The zoning board, the zoning board of adjustment as of. No, 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 please, please. After due public hearing completed its consideration of ZB case ten, what, fourteen oh seven, applicant seeking relief from zoning article, none of these mean anything to me, so apologize. Eight point two point three to allow for thirty nine units within the Gaslight Village Cooperative Manufacturing Housing Park at Five Quinn Street. As a result of such consideration, the board, the board voted to exercise authority granted through zoning article nine point three and approve with the following conditions. All new units shall be connected to, to municipal sewage and approval shall be contingent upon conformity with the zoning ordinance, including requirements for maximum age of allowable manufactured structures at any time any structure is installed.
But the paragraph above says about nineteen ninety five. The paragraph above that.
That is, it has to abide by the zoning ordinance itself, zoning ordinance.
So this is what comes before that?
That it's ninety five.
Yes.
Then. There it is, you just actually read it.
It does, it does, in the paragraph above it.
If it references the zoning ordinance.
Mister, Mister Brown, I think you have the bottom half of it, that's why.
The zoning board adjustment decision.
By Mister Brown. I guess what I'm, I guess what my argument at this point is also is I've had such history that I have no clue when she filed anything. I mean, I, I can see, and I'm not by any means saying that anybody is shady, that's not what I'm saying, but.
So here's what I can tell you, we, we received.
No, 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 I, I, I was specifically talking about the town. I was specifically talking about.
We received it on October seventeenth. That's when it got sent to us, that's when we made a decision as a board to meet and reheare the, and decide whether we'd reheare the case. When we met as a board, we got the information presented in front of us pertaining to, will you reheare the case based on this information?
Okay, so I have a question, if it was past thirty days, would I be sitting here?
Well, well, no, because it would be past the window.
That's my point, that's, that's exactly my point.
Well, the, if the town doesn't.
But that doesn't mean that your.
Town is actually against allowing it, so they would do a rehearing, a petition.
My question is, is they did it on October seventeenth, three days shy of the thirty days, three days shy.
Agreed, so it's within the window.
So I have to accept the word, I didn't get anything, I have to accept the word of Leanne that she filed it on the seventeenth. I need to see the paperwork, because that's my argument.
Uh, I don't know, I honestly.
You had a meeting last time.
Ma'am, I don't know the answer to whether or not we can table this over your questioning the dates of the appeal application.
I'm gonna question everything when it comes to her, everything.
I understand, I, I understand, I, I'm not holding that against you. We received this based on this information, that's when the, I can, the email that I received was in the thirty days.
Do you have that email?
Uh, I, I, I don't know.
Because I, I really am.
You can petition the town when they sent the emails out.
It's important to me.
It almost.
Because it is, it would completely unjustify this whole entire decision or this whole entire meeting.
I'm gonna decide to move forward on this meeting under the understa- if you guys could listen for a second, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. I'm gonna decide to move forward with this meeting under the understanding that all of the dates were submitted appropriately.
Yes.
I would imagine that if that is proven in the, in another time, that that's not true, then that would be a, a, a matter for a court. Uh, but I'm forced, I really believe that I would not be doing my job if I didn't act as though all of this was done above board. There's no reason for me.
I get it.
As the chairman of the board.
Absolutely.
Believe this is above.
Absolutely, I understand what you're saying, I just understand my history with these three.
As far as the new information that when it comes to the Gaslight Trailer Park, the condition of the expanded zoning. It's fairly clear what they spelled out their intent was, do you have anything that you'd like to add regarding that?
I do. Uh, I, I, I feel like there's plenty that, every single day.
Well, then let's focus on that.
Okay, we can do that. Every single day, people come in front of you with things that don't meet the board, don't meet the standards, don't meet anything. So what can I do to get a, what is the word I'm looking for? Thank you, a variance, thank you.
So it's not on us to tell you how to successfully pass a variance?
I'm not asking, I, I'm not asking to successfully pass it, I'm asking, can this be the same thing, or do I have to file another, something?
It is separate, so.
Okay.
If they uphold the nineteen ninety five, you can file a variance.
Okay.
Like Kate Capola did.
Okay.
On hers.
Okay.
And say you want a variance to allow for.
That's what I was.
Home park.
Okay.
Is not nineteen ninety five.
Okay. That, it, absolutely, that is exactly my question.
Okay.
That was my question.
Okay, I genuinely am not trying to be a roadblock for you, trying to get you to the answers.
Oh, I know, oh, no, no, I know you're not, I know that I'm sitting in front of what I hope is an unbiased board.
We're just trying to interpret the stuff.
As long as I'm not sitting in front of those three, I'm assuming that you guys are an unbiased board.
This is what we exist for, is to be the separate mediator.
Respectable.
Okay.
Respectable.
Just make sure we're on the same page.
Absolutely.
So do you have anything pertaining to the original case about their, the original appeal of the denial of the building permit and the new information there?
Uh, no, I understand it.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Doesn't mean I agree with it, I don't have to, you know?
You do not, absolutely. Uh, okay, if you don't have anything else, then we'll let the town make their case, I don't know who's making the case for the town.
Sure.
Um, and then unless you guys have any questions at this point.
No.
Everybody, okay?
Yeah.
All right, I just want to make sure you've had a chance to say everything you want to say.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Well, if I can't, if I, if I can't go into my whole spiel of why it passes, then I guess I don't have anything else to say.
Uh, I don't fully understand that.
Because I assumed I was coming here for something different.
Okay.
So.
But based on your new understanding, you, you feel as though you've had a chance to make your case?
I do.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Chuck, are you speaking for the town or?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if you have to speak into the microphone.
Sure, yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you want the chair too? There you go, sorry about that.
Mary, is that you? Sorry, thank you.
You mean?
So the town's position is to ask that the board review this new information that was provided and try to bring some clarity to this issue so that we can have some closure here. The decision that I made to withhold the permit was based on wording in the town ordinance and my understanding of it and how it should apply. I, I think that this new information that's been provided corroborates that. Uh, and I would just ask that the board consider that and come up with a, a decision that can provide some direction for us to go here. And that's really all I have to say.
Any questions?
Um, yeah, I'd just like to clarify something on building permits. Do you, do you need a building permit to push the deck up in this town?
Yes.
You need a building permit to remodel your kitchen in this town?
Depends on the scope of the work. Uh, certain replacement of fixtures do not require permits. Uh, if you go beyond that to structural work or new electrical circuits, new plumbing risers, things like that, then yes, permits are required. So it really depends on the scope of work. You can do a lot of remodeling without a permit.
May I re- that? May I say something?
Uh, no, I, it, it, I'm gonna hold it, because it doesn't actually pertain to that, I'm not talking about permits, curious.
I just wanted you to know that I didn't do any of those things.
I, nothing, I did not take it as an accusation.
Okay.
Um, I lost train of thought. I don't, any other questions?
I guess what I was getting at is, I know when I build a house or anything like that, I always get my permit in hand first before I put any money into it, investment. I like to get all my approvals upfront if they're needed, the work, the scope of work requires permit, I like to get the permit in front of me before we do the work.
Well, we assumed at that point, after the last meeting, that we would. That was, that was our understanding too.
I, I think that, I think the hang up here is this, is that we passed with a contingent that a certain standard was met and almost whether or not that standard can be proven to met is, is regardless, because it's not really, not really what it's about.
But when I left the meeting, I'm saying, you know, we said that you, you should get your building permit in hand. When I left the meeting, that was my understanding, was that I was going to get my permit, and that's exactly what I did do the next step, was I went to get the permit. And then the wording was changed where I'm not giving you a permit until you prove to me that it passes the nineteen ninety five revised standards of HUD. This has been our argument for the last two months now.
Well, I think that that was contingent on.
But it was, and, and again, you weren't, you weren't privy to the conversations, but these conversations never once, never once contained the year. If you'll attest to that also, it was revised additions for HUD as of nineteen ninety five. I have been on the phone with Washington DC, the HUD Mobile Home Department in Washington DC, and I'm pretty sure that they called the office also. So my.
Here, maybe she should come back up here and.
Uh, I'm actually, I'm actually gonna just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop it, because I understand what you're saying, I understand your frustration, but it's.
No, I just wanted.
As far as this board, this board's conversation definitely had discussions about man- the year of manufacture. We definitely had discussions about the intent of the town.
We did.
We did not feel at the time there was clarification, and that's how you ended up with that wording. So I understand this been.
What Brian said, that's all.
Okay.
Of how he always gets his permit first. I did too. My husband's been a builder for 23 years now.
Okay.
So it's not like I don't, you know, I don't know. Always get my permits. I have been to the board. I've got my permits for everything under the sun or anything that I wanted or that was required of me, I guess is what I'm saying.
Right, right. Okay.
So I don't want anybody to think that I went and did something without a permit because I did not.
Okay. Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Um, do we have any other questions for Chuck? No. I'm, I don't have a question. Thank you, Chuck.
You're welcome.
Um, any public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
You just have to come up and speak and give your name and.
My name is Mary Shepherd. I'm the operations manager in finance at Gaslight Village. Um, just for future, I want to clarify this. The, everything specifically references the HUD standard of 1995. We researched online. We talked to HUD. We looked everywhere. HUD didn't make a standard in 1995. It doesn't exist. And HUD said that anything with a HUD sticker, that has not changed since 76. It's a 76 HUD sticker and it's still valid. If it's on the trailer, it's valid. They did some changes to the HUD in 2005, I think in 2000, 2005. They did things like address land paint and address handicap access. But if it has the sticker, it's still HUD compliant. Just, I just want to clarify that. The ordinance references it, something that does not exist. Standard, it doesn't exist.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for her?
Well, I was gonna say something about the variance, the, when you came up for those extra lots, that's when they told you they had to be 1995.
It doesn't say it in my decision. Um, I'm gonna talk to a lawyer about that.
It doesn't say the year, but it says.
In my decision, yeah, I have a copy of the decision. But the variance has expired too, and we've been paying taxes on those extra five, five lots ever since that was issued. We've been paying taxes like they're rented for five years on those lots.
But, but I feel if you had had that information, then this.
I didn't even have a copy of the variance. We're a co-op.
I agree.
I've been on the board for a year now. I've had, gone nuts trying to get. I don't even know. So I've been on the board for almost two years actually, and I'm the whole board right now. And I didn't know a lot of this. I just, I had no idea.
Dumped on your plate. That's dumped on your plate.
Oh, you aren't kidding. I'm telling you.
Thank you.
I didn't even know there was a variance when I read the town ordinance. I emailed everybody I knew and says they didn't know anything about this. And I actually got the copy of the variance from the contractor, um, Dubrowman King, Nick, that oversaw the project. He had it. I didn't have it.
I guess.
I had no idea. I didn't even know it. Now it's expired. I'll be back.
Um, any other public comment?
I just want to get the lots rented so we don't have to put up on our rent.
Yeah, I know.
You gotta let her in.
I've been paying rent.
She's been paying rent since June.
For help.
I'm, come for you guys. Good if we close public comment and deliberate amongst ourselves. Everybody ready for that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
Uh, we're talking amongst ourselves. We are, yes.
So this is my sticky sentence.
Yes. Yes, I, that's.
That's my sticky sentence. That, he added that the zoning ordinance is outdated in its requirement that manufactured units must have been built in 1995 or later.
The fact that a 1995 HUD standard doesn't exist even lends me to believe more that the intent of the town was that the manufacturer date was 1995 or newer.
Not open can of worms.
They should have said that.
It's that for this variance.
It is also part of this, this variance in this, this unit. Is that what you mean?
Yes, I know it's part of this variance and part of Gaslight.
Right.
But is it a town ordinance? It has to be 95 or newer, or this variance
Well, yeah.
For those five lots has to be 95 or newer.
Doesn't say 95 in the variance.
It does. You just don't have the first part of it. You have.
No, I have a final decision.
If you guys could just talk quietly.
So my only question is, is there another, uh, park in the, in the town till? Is there an ordinance that says it has to be 95 or newer, or this variance for these five lots have to be 95 or newer?
I think that only pertains to the Gaslight Village because they were coming up for a variance. That's what my interpretation.
My interpretation is for Ga- this is for Gaslight Village, which is what we're.
Yeah.
This is a gas town.
Yep.
Exactly.
But it's, it does it, is it for the rest of the town as well, or, or is it, is there an ordinance?
Because they asked for an ordinance.
Right. So to this variance here has to be 95 or newer, or is it a town ordinance, everything has to be 95 or newer?
Well, we referenced the town ordinance in our last discussion, which does not specify a manufacturer date. It's, it specifies a, a HUD standard date, which we questioned what the intent of that was. And we came up with, let's follow the letter of what this says. Uh, I kind of think that your, your question you asked is a valid question. To me, it, it spells further, uh, it spells further into the intent of the town. And it also specifically spells out the intent of this particular expansion in this variance.
Yes.
I agree that when we have our discussions later about zoning ordinances that need to be updated, this is gonna be at the top of my list.
Yeah, it has to be.
This is an unfair, unclear.
It is.
You know, wording.
In the variance, which this particular unit is being put on, it's clearly states they wanted it 1995.
In these expansions. That's the way that I.
And maybe Gaslight, if they had this information, would, could have passed it.
Get onto her. Yeah, she, that's what.
Sure. Yes. Yeah, definitely.
So does it matter that the variance is even expired at this point?
Uh.
Your grandfather.
Variants is don't expire.
They do, yeah. Yeah, this, this one had a contingent on it.
I don't know why it's that.
Tax. That's an expired, that's an expired variance.
Um.
He said I'll be back.
Yeah, they'll have to come back again to renew. Right, but it's still expired.
Uh, so we're, 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 okay, we're digressing here. Yep. Um, so I don't even know what we're.
It's a crazy case.
Go back to the original.
Just to get the whole thing.
All you're doing is rehearing the original appeal.
Yes. That's the old meeting minutes.
All right.
I think I put it in your pile.
Right. And so, so this is, I mean, here's what we're talking about here. Approval shall be contingent upon conformity within the zoning ordinance, including requirements for maximum age, allowable manufacturing structure at the time any structure is installed. Uh, so that's where it's fairly straightforward for me here.
And it is too, and, and on this particular case because it is stated 95 or newer.
Yeah. So I make a motion that we uphold the administrative decision for the denial of a building permit to install a 1998 mobile home at Gaslight Village.
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight, sorry, geez. I make it a motion that we uphold the administrative decision of the code enforcement officer for a denial of a building permit to install a 1988 mobile home at Gaslight Village.
Does anybody have those emails that I'd like forwarded to me? Somebody?
Not the time. There's a motion on the table.
I second that motion.
Seconded. Any discussion?
No.
None? Those in favor? I?
I.
Those opposed? The, uh, the decision of the code enforcement officer is upheld. Am I wording that all correctly? Everybody agree that I'm wording that correctly?
Yes.
Yes.
Asking what our intent is, that that needs to be 1995 or newer. For this particular, whatever's behind here.
Yeah.
Okay. And we took a vote and voted, yeah?
Yeah.
Thank you for coming in.
So you can file a variance if you like.
I will, I will.
Yep.
I still want the, a copy of the email.
I, ma'am, I don't know the process. You're gonna have to go to the town and, uh.
Well, they're here.
You're gonna have to go to the appropriate people in the town to request, I, I'm, I'm assuming that's gonna be a Freedom of Information Act.
I would assume so, yeah.
So I don't know who you'd submit and file that paperwork to.
Well, okay, so I'm asking who I would. No, 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 no. The, the email for.
Written request that you would like the email for the appeal.
Perfect. Because if it's past 30 days, this doesn't exist.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, um, I might have to step out here.
Another call?
Yeah. Well, I don't know if the other, they cleared the other one, but, uh, so we will move on to case 22 dash 15.
Yes.
That's you, Rebecca. Okay.
I'm sorry. Uh, so I just want to give you full disclosure here. I, I might have to step out in a moment here. Um, and if I do, that means that there has to be, in order for a motion to pass here, there has to be three positive votes. So there's only three of us here, then that means everybody has to vote in the affirmative of it.
Sure.
Um, so you have the option to, uh, to hold off and hear your case later if you want, or you can hear it with just three people. If I have to step out, I'll know in 90 seconds here.
I'll go ahead and hear it with three people, I think.
Okay. Uh, so how this usually works is, um, you just kind of tell us what's going on, what you're trying to do, read your, your case into the minutes here. And.
Yep, Rebecca Albert, 348 Caleb Hill Road.
Thank you.
So we are requesting a, um, variance of the ordinance that says that a new, I guess, I don't know the wording, but the shed, we want to build a new shed and it will break the plane of the house. So that's what we're asking a variance for. The reason we need to do that is our house is built on a hill. So from the very front of the house, the moment you step back, you're going downhill. So we can't build a shed other than having to, you know, do it down at the bottom of the staircase or something. Um, and the reason we want a closer shed is that we bought the house 25 years ago and we're 25 years older now. And having to get to the snow blower and all of the, you know, every, all the stuff. It's just will be much easier for us if it's closer to the house and we don't have to go down the hill of the driveway or down the hill behind the house to have that storage area. We, um, proposed to build the shed. It's gonna be a wooden structure built on site. And I think it's 10 by 12. And will be painted to match the house. We just recently painted the house, so it, uh, you know, it would match exactly that same color scheme. And, um, yeah, I think that's pretty much it.
Okay. Just, uh, for a matter of formality, I apologize. Um, we just have to read this application into the record. So I, I can just, you can do that. I can do it with whatever. We usually have the applicant do it.
I can do it. I don't mind. Okay, let's see if I can find it all here.
Section one, start at section one.
The building of a wooden, so a variance is requested of, ma'am, sorry, my husband didn't fill in the article section. Of the zoning ordinance to permit the building of a wooden utility shed painted to match the colors of the house. The granting of the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because it will be set back from the road and not unattractive in any way. If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because although the shed will break the plane of the house, it will be built onsite in an aesthetically pleasing location. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because the shed would relieve stress and possible injury to a 74-year-old, not me.
Yeah.
Who has to move a 400-pound snow blower to maintain property. If the variance were granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because no neighbors will actually be seeing it. One possible exception, and it will enhance attractiveness of our property. Um, unnecessary hardship owing to a special condition of the property that distinguishes it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because the property slopes dramatically beside and behind the house, making the proposed positioning the only feasible, feasible building location. And the proposed use is a reasonable one because the machinery housed is necessary for proper maintenance of property, snow removal, and general safety. Explain how if the criteria in subparagraph A are not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if owing to special conditions of the property that, that distinguish it from other properties in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance. And a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. As mentioned before, the property beside the house drops dramatically, drops off dramatically, and cannot be built on safely. The proposed positioning of the shed will not be unattractive and the doors will not face the road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome. I have a question for you. Um, you have an old shed that's already there.
Yes.
Is it, what size is that shed that you have there already?
Don't know. I think it's bigger than the one we're proposing. Um.
So why wouldn't you?
The shed that, so the shed that's there is, um, I don't know if I can show you a photo or something to give you an idea. I don't know. Actually, the old, the old shed's not even in this picture, so. Um, but I can pass around pictures if you want to see.
From what I'm reading, it's sort of a drop off between the house.
Yeah, so, so the, exactly. The house, it goes, there's, we have a big driveway. It goes directly downhill. So to get to the old shed, you have to go down the hill of the driveway and you have to go down the hill of the driveway and, uh, and then, you know, there's a little grass area. So it's just like ice builds up right in front of the door very badly. So sometimes we can't even get into that shed, um, in the middle of winter. So it's, it's just a way to have, you know, for us to have a nicer, newer shed that's more secure and closer to our front door.
So the picture here, um.
Yeah.
With your husband. Where do you want?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I know.
Where do you want to put the shed on the property there?
Right, um, right where, let's see. That's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, it's right with this, with, with.
Which technically would be. It's gonna have to be removed, right?
In relation to that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, is, well, here's the aerial.
Yep.
Are you talking, I made a little square.
Sure.
Are you talking right where that little square is?
Here's the road. Uh, yeah, pretty much. That's exactly where it would be. Yep.
And, and you mean all the side setbacks?
Yes, it's, I believe it's what, 10 feet, right?
Yeah, because it's under 200.
Right. Um, so, yeah, we're, and we're more than, it'll be more than, it'll be like 12 feet from the property line. And it's setback from the road.
So your intent here is basically to get a shed closer to your driveway to do your winter driveway maintenance. Is my understanding of that right?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's a drop off behind the house where the old shed is. It's tough to get the snow blower up to slow.
Basically, yes.
And the variance basically is because.
It breaks the.
The plane of the house.
Right.
Yep. Do you have a street view? Is, is this a street view of your house here?
Yeah, that's looking at it from Caleb Hill Road, that top left picture.
This one here?
I mean, it's terrible pictures.
About a shed over in here?
Yes. Yeah, where the trash cans are, basically, yeah.
Should we do a site visit?
If you feel, if someone feels like this, we should. I, I will never, ever ever hang up on that. Many, many a times where site visits have provided a whole ton of context, but pictures just can't do. If someone feels like they need it, I'll, let's do it.
I'm gonna just say one thing, and I also think your site visits have always been very helpful. Um, just understand that if you do it, you don't have any meeting in December. So I just want you to keep in mind that maybe you would want to have a meeting in December, otherwise you would have to wait till January for the decision. I don't know. They're gonna do anything this winter or not. Maybe you just want to put that in context before, or. So you would normally not meet until January.
Right, right, right.
Unless you had a special meeting.
Yeah, our, our hope was to build the shed as soon as we get, as, as soon as you approve, should you approve, and as soon as the building permit is approved. Like, you know, we have a person lined up to do it. Um, obviously, if that can't happen, that's.
You're going to do this pre-winter.
Yeah, I know. And we're kind of late in the process for various reasons.
You're saying, again, is if we do a site visit, could possibly push it off to December if we have a meeting?
Well, we don't have a meeting ever scheduled December. So unless we chose to schedule one.
Right.
And do it, we'd be pushing it out to January.
But even December might be.
Late.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, or doesn't make you that way. I guess my point two was that you could schedule one earlier, not wait, you don't have to wait for the 3D for the.
We just have to post for a week, correct?
Right. Because it's already been, you would continue it.
Right.
You don't have to read notice.
Uh, what's the feeling? Is it feeling you want to do a site visit? I'm not personally feeling one on this one.
Can I see the?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
How tall is this gonna be?
I, that's a great question. I don't know.
Is it gonna be like, well, I built the shed and it ended up being like one and a half because I used the top as like storage. Is this, is it gonna be?
I think it's just one level. I don't think we've got a plan on putting.
Like a storage.
It's definitely be big enough to stand up in and, yeah. So, and big enough to put in a snow blower and a lawnmower and some tools, you know?
Right.
So you have a drop off in the, the right-hand side of the house too?
It's on both sides. Yeah, yeah. Basically, it just goes right down.
And this is where they're gonna put it, right here?
Yeah, about up where those trash barrels are, is my understanding of it.
And there's no way you sneak it a little further back to be even with the front of the house?
No, because it's the drop off. If you see, you can see the stairs, the top of the.
Yeah.
Yeah, that goes right.
All right, I see it.
Goes right down from there, so.
Okay.
You, you comfortable having a, a site visit?
I'm comfortable not having it.
Have you, is everybody?
Yeah. Yeah. I just, I would like to add that, you know, I think they, they do their best diligence, diligence, to get it pushed back as far as you can.
Yes.
You know, I.
I agree.
Hate to see 10 feet behind it, still level.
Right.
Behind the shed. That means you could have pushed the shed a little bit further back.
Right.
Break the planes of the house so much.
Yeah, there'll be, I'm not sure exactly how many feet it is, but because of that slope there, our utility room, all of our breaker switches and all of that, and our water pump area is all down that hill on the outside. You can't get to our breaker switches from inside the house. So we have to be able to at least walk, you know, have a couple of feet there to walk by that and go down the hill to get to those, to get to that room.
And then I also didn't know when we just, we're, we're discussing, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Maybe we can put a restriction on the height.
Yes.
So we don't have two-story shed there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Okay, sure.
Uh, do we have a, a motion now? Do you have a specific? Oh, yes. Is there any public? I see nobody. No.
Just.
Do you? Do you have a certain number of feet in your?
Well, normal height of a shed is, let's just say the walls are eight foot, which is very generous. And another four foot pitch, so 12 feet.
12 feet, you're comfortable, that is, you're, you're allowed input here.
Sure, thank you. No, I don't, that sounds reasonable to me.
Just, yeah, we don't want a 24-foot tall shed there.
No. I don't want it either.
Um, okay, any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve ZV 22-15 to, uh, put a
10 by 12.
10 by 12 shed that will break the plane of the house with a restriction that the height be no more than 12 feet to the peak.
I'll second that.
And it's far back, so you don't want it.
And as far back as possible without getting into the slope of the land.
Sure. I second the motion.
Made and seconded. Any discussion on it?
Yeah.
No? All right, those in favor of passing the case as mentioned by Brian, I apologize that I can't reread that exactly back into it.
Yeah.
Uh, those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Case 22-15 passes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good luck. Thanks.
Uh, we could do minutes.
Oh. I wasn't at the last minute. No.
For a hot second.
You were at the last meeting.
Oh.
Uh, any motions to pass the minute, meeting, minutes from the meetings of September 20th, 2022?
I make a motion to accept the meeting, zoning board meeting on what?
September 20th, 2022.
September 20th, 2022.
Right, motion made. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are passed as read. A motion to accept the minutes for our, the hearing on October 25th, 2022, which that was the one we were not present for. Any motions?
What was it at the beginning?
The minutes from October 25th, 2022.
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes from October 5th, 2022.
I'll second that one. Made and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Nope. And the vote? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? She, Leah.
Nobody seconded my motion for the, this sucked into the September minutes.
We didn't?
No.
Well, we're gonna have to go back and do it again then. So there were two.
You just jumped right open to anybody having.
Is there a second to the motion for the minutes on September 20th?
I'm making a motion to accept the minutes of second.
At September 20th. Okay, so there's a motion. I'll second the motion. Any discussion? No. Those in favor of the minutes from September 20th, signify, say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are accepted. Any motions adjourned this weekend?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All right, it has been made and seconded. The meeting is adjourned at 7:14.
And Matt, you made it through the whole meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yeah. Good job.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Very good.